I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call. Mr. Brecker.
Here.
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mrs. Delaney is here, Mrs. James.
Here.
Mr. Mazatesta.
Here.
Mr. Muldowney.
Here.
Mr. Sherrock.
Here.
Mr. Venna.
Here.
Mr. Zanella.
Here.
At this time, I would like to recognize two guests invited by the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education that we will have address issues during our public comments and questions section of the agenda. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Representative Kurt Mosser. Thank you for coming, and our local Senator John Gortner. Thank you, sir. Announcements?
Are the thinking folks here? How do I... Ms. Sooks, would you care to speak to the board and the public?
Thank you so much for coming to see our... We did a little bit of a musical preview for the board about an hour ago. So, thank you again for coming. Our show is musical to musical this year, and it is April 8th and 9th. Tickets are on sale now in the athletic office, but you can also get them at the door, and it is at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
We're going to change a little... A couple of things up here in the agenda. At this time, we would like to move our public comments and questions to earlier in the meeting so that if... We truly appreciate our representative and our senator being here, and they have a very, very busy schedule. And we would like to hear from them, and if anyone has any questions regarding any issues that are going on with our budget and the school money that we are in dire need of, we would like to hear from them as to what's going on down in Harrisburg, and then we will entertain questions from the public for them at this time.
Okay, I think Representative Mosser and I are sorting out a tag team for this, so we have some information. Obviously, the budget is a very important issue, and we need to give you some background on it, so we have some handouts. And you have a little larger handout, so let's just... And I have some for the public here as well. That's a one-pager, and Kurt's is a little more detailed.
Thank you.
It'll take two minutes here to hand it out. Yeah, just take two more minutes for... Let me go. Should I address you in this fashion with the audience behind me? Is that the way you'd like? Can we go four in a row?
Someone's...
Wherever you're comfortable. But we're not putting you in a corner for being...
Okay, just for purposes of time, let me start. And we're going to give you our perspective as your local legislators on the budget process. The voters, a year and a half ago, elected, much like they did in Washington, divided government in Harrisburg. They elected Tom Wolf as governor, as a Democratic governor, and they elected a Republican House and a Republican Senate. So, much like in Washington, they elected divided government. So, again, Republicans control the House and the Senate. We have a Democratic governor in Tom Wolf. He introduced a budget in March of last year, which, in our viewpoint, tremendously increased taxes and tremendously increased spending. A number that I'd like you to remember is that if you total up the amount of taxes that Governor Wolf proposed last year, and you looked at what the other governors in the other forty-nine states proposed, and doubled that number, you have the amount of money that Tom Wolf proposed as new taxes here in Pennsylvania. So, if you take the forty-nine other states' governors and their tax proposals and double it, you have what Tom Wolf proposed here in Pennsylvania. He proposed an increase in the personal income tax. He proposed an increase in the sales tax. He proposed eliminating a number of exemptions of the sales tax. For instance, under his proposal, daycare would now be taxed, diapers would now be taxed, funeral expenses would now be taxed, private care nursing home expenses, which is about $6,000 a month, would be taxed. I've got two kids in college. Under the governor's proposal, textbooks would be taxed, and meal plans. Meal plans at colleges would be taxed. He also proposed a cigarette tax of about a dollar a pack. He proposed a banks' shares tax on the banking industry. He proposed what would be the largest tax in the country on the natural gas industry. So, altogether, over a two-year period, it would be a $12 billion tax increase, which is equal to $1,000 for every man, woman, and child in the state of Pennsylvania. It did not go over well, very frankly. He also proposed about a 9% increase in spending. So, we had budget discussions. As you may know, I'm a Senate Majority Whip, and as the Senate Majority Whip, I was at any budget discussions between the governor, the House, and the Senate. He believed that there was support for his tax proposal. So, on June 1st, as you can see on the sheets, that tax proposal was brought up for a vote in the House of Representatives, and the vote on it was zero to 193. Not one single House member, Democrat or Republican, supported the governor's proposal on increasing taxes. So, as the month went on, and the budget discussions were not going anywhere, the House and the Senate decided to come up with their own budget. And so, we sent a budget to the governor on June 30th, which increased spending by about 3%. So, if you know what the rate of inflation is, it's about 3%, and that's the proposal that we sent to the governor, a budget which increased spending by 3%. It had record amount of monies for school districts, and we sent it to him on June 30th, along with a pension reform bill and a liquor privatization bill. Within an hour, Governor Wolf did what no governor has done in modern history. He vetoed the entire budget. Twice during Governor Ed Rendell's term, he got budgets that he didn't like, and he signed them, but used his line item veto power to eliminate some of the line items that he did not agree with. Even Tom Corbett, during his last budget, he signed a budget and lined out some things that he liked. What Governor Wolf did on June 30th, within an hour of receiving it, he vetoed the entire budget. Entirely. Something that no modern governor has done. And that put Mount Carmel and other school districts, all 500 school districts, along with counties and women's centers, in the position that they ended up being in. And that, come September or so, they had to start, or maybe before, had to start borrowing money in order to stay afloat. There was an effort in August to come to a compromise. The governor rejected that. On August 25th, the House attempted to override the governor's veto. It was unsuccessful. It takes two-thirds of vote in order to do that, and they were not able to get two-thirds vote to override the governor's veto. So, in September, as schools started hurting, counties started hurting, women's violence centers started hurting, we came up with a four-month stopgap budget. We decided to come up with a budget with four months of funding, because revenues were coming in, actually ahead of schedule. Money was coming in. It was sitting in the treasury, and we were hearing from schools like Mount Carmel that they were hurting. And so, in September, we adopted a four-month budget based on last year's spending and sent it to Governor Wolf. You will see that five days later, Governor Wolf, for the second time, vetoed the entire thing. Again, he could have used his line item veto power and kept some stuff and got rid of some stuff. You should know, in the budget, there are 410 line items. 410 line items in a budget. If you took the budget that we sent to the governor on June 30th and you compare it to the budget that he introduced in March, 270 of the 410 line items were either the same or higher in the budget that we sent to him on June 30th. 270 of the 410 line items. And yet, the governor twice vetoed the entire thing, rather than saying, "Let's do the 270 we agree on, and let's fight over the other 140 that we don't." So, you will see, in October, the governor said, "Put up my proposal now, because I've got the votes in order to do it." So, in an incredible move, really, the House Republican Leader seated the floor to the House Democratic Leader and said, "Fine. You can put up the governor's proposal, and we will give you a vote." And in fact, that's what happened. The governor refashioned his proposal, reduced some of his taxes, gave it to the House Democrats. They brought it up for a vote, and it failed by twenty-some votes. Short. Actually, it failed by thirty votes, if I recall. I think it was seventy... Seventy-three votes in favor of it. You need 102. So, it failed by thirty votes, and it was a bipartisan fail on that. So, we went back to the drawing board. On October 28th, we in the Senate tried to override the four-month veto, and we were unsuccessful in doing it. Again, it takes two-thirds votes in order to do that, and the Senate Democratic Caucus would not support us in overriding the governor's veto. So, in December, we had... In late November, there was an attempt at a framework agreement, a new proposal that actually the governor signed on to. It would have included some spending. It would have included some taxes. It would have included pension reform, and would have included selling wine at grocery stores and convenience stores. Earth showering, that you could go into a Wiser Giant and buy a bottle of wine. But the governor agreed to all those things. And so, we brought it up in the Senate. There were eight bills. We brought 78 bills up in the Senate. They passed with bipartisan support. Went over to the House. The House brought up Bill Number One, which was welfare reform. It passed. They brought up Bill Number Two, which was pension reform, and not one Democratic member supported what the governor agreed to in regard to pension reform. And when that second bill was defeated, the framework deal was off. And it didn't continue any further, because the governor could not get any of his members to agree to the pension reform bill that the governor had agreed to. So, at the end of December, as we're now reaching six months of no budget, we sent Budget Number Three to the governor and pleaded with him to use his line item veto power in order to get funding to school districts and counties and women's shelters and libraries, et cetera. And the good news was that on December 29th, the governor did actually sign a budget. So, we actually have a signed budget in place. But he used his line item veto power in order to eliminate $6 billion worth of spending. The frustrating thing about that was, and remember this, he said back then that he had to veto because the budget was out of balance. And as governor, he could not sign it in its fullness, because it was out of balance. And what he said was, and what the independent folks said, was that in order to make it balanced, there had to be about $500 million in tax revenue coming in. And he was close. We think there were $400 million that would have had to have come in tax revenue. But he said it was $500 million out of balance. Well, for that $500 million out of balance, the governor blue-lined $6 billion worth of spending, including $3 billion in basic education funding. Let... Just let that sink in for a second. For the $500 million in balance, he vetoed $6 billion worth of spending, including half of the basic education funding for school districts. Since then, the governor has introduced a new budget on February 9th, which has a retroactive personal income tax increase in it, going back to January 1st. The frustrating thing for me is, and you should know, I know because I'm the House Majority Whip, I'm a part of any budget discussion, from February 9th to this past Monday, which was March 14th, the governor did not request one single budget meeting. Not one. Not one. Did not ask us to come to his office to discuss this prior year's budget during that period from February 9th to March 14th. And he did on March 14th, because we decided that it can't go on any further. We've got schools that are close to shutting down if they don't get money. We've got a corrections budget that has run out of money. Our Department of Corrections has run out of money. And other entities, the Penn State 4H program is going to close within three weeks, because the governor blue-lined out the money for Penn State ag programs. So, we decided we had to present Budget Number Four to the governor. We are running a surplus, just so you know. We're almost nine months through the year. We're running a surplus. And so, we sent him Budget Number Four today at around 2:30. We passed it yesterday in the House and Senate. By the way, each of the bills in the House and Senate were passed with bipartisan support. There were Democrats that supported it in the House, Democrats that supported it in the Senate. So, it was with bipartisan support. Sent it to the governor and said, "Please sign it." And we reduced the amount of the budget to balance it. We believe it's balanced. It takes an action by the Budget Secretary to take a couple of moves, but we believe it's balanced. Now, the governor said yesterday that it's $250 million out of balance still. It's a $6.2 billion supplemental appropriation, is what we sent him. So, again, we are urging him, "Governor, if it is..." We believe it's balanced. But if it is $250 million out of balance, then sign the other $5.75 billion in funding, including the $3 billion for our school districts, and eliminate 250 somewhere, if you truly believe it's out of balance. He has said, which I'm sure you know, he has said he's going to veto the entire thing. He said he's going to veto the entire thing. We're urging him not. By the way, we added another $50 million to basic education. When you add it all up, there's now $200 million in additional basic education. The highest amount of state funding that has ever gone into basic education is included in this budget, which was his priority. I mean, when the governor ran, he was very clear about the fact that he wanted to make education number one, spending number one. This has more basic education spending than any budget in history. I want to go back to one other thing, and then I'll cede. He talked about during his campaign, the tax on the natural gas industry. If you remember... So, we expected that tax proposal. If you remember, he had a campaign commercial where he was sitting in a classroom, and there were kids around, and he said, "There's money down there." And he said that there would be a billion dollars in revenue if we only taxed the natural gas industry. Just so you know, the proposal that he came up with, that he forwarded to us back in December as a part of the framework, his tax proposal on the natural gas industry was going to produce $87 million. $87 million. Because of, good for us, the low price of natural gas and the fact that the natural gas industry is pretty well shut down in Pennsylvania. So, the proposal that was part of the framework that the governor agreed to, his billion-dollar tax, and the numbers that he gave us, was now going to produce less than $100 million in funding. So, just so, if you're wondering, why can't we just go ahead and throw a tax on the natural gas industry? That's what happened. And by the way, we do have a tax on the natural gas industry, and it was adopted, what, four or five years ago, and it's produced about a billion dollars in revenue in regard to that impact fee that benefits counties and extension offices and other programs. So, where we are right now, the superintendent and school board, is we have sent to the governor Budget Number Four. It is a little over $6 billion. We believe it is balanced. We got Democratic support in both the House and the Senate. We are asking and urging, and I would urge you, to contact the governor's office and ask him to sign it. We know there's going to be a deficit in next year, and we are willing to go right back tomorrow to discussing next year's budget, but we need to get this one done. We are almost nine months done with this budget. There is no tax increase you can adopt now, unless you do it retroactively, that will bring in a lot of money for this budget year. We are already almost nine months done. So, we need to close out this budget and begin working on the next one. And we believe we did that with Budget Number Four that we sent to governor yesterday. So, that's what I have in regard to the budget. And Kurt, not sure if you have anything to add in that?
I don't have a whole lot to add. I think, you know, there's some other things that I think we're missing that... When we did put that... When he accepted half of basically the basic education money, we didn't send the bills along that go with it, the fiscal code and things that sort of are the roadmap for where the money gets distributed. So, that would have had the formula in it to where the money goes. And I'm telling you that Mount Carmel didn't fare out well the way the governor sent it out. He didn't go with last... All the plans that were always gone out. The majority of the money went to one school district. And I'll let you all guess which school district that was. The majority of the money went to the southeast of Pennsylvania, and it was very, very unfair to all other 499 school districts. So, that really angered us a whole lot there. And I know that the Department of Education has, I think, sent out "How to Close Your Schools." That's wrong. That's wrong. His secretaries in the budget hearings were saying, "Never waste a crisis." If they're creating crisis with our kids in education, that's wrong. We're using these kids as hostages, and it's wrong. Again, this is the highest ever state dollars towards education, and it doesn't have the votes. I mean, this is... I mean, the governor needs to have the votes. He doesn't have the votes for these massive tax increases. We've showed him over and over again. We've tried to be on a bipartisan basis. I know John worked on things that he probably wasn't thrilled with on that framework budget. I was one of 15 Republican members in the House to say, to vote on a procedural vote, to put that framework budget up for a vote. I can't agree for it, but I didn't care. I thought the money has to get out to our schools. It never came to that, because he doesn't have the votes. Now, we thought, well, what we offered was some great funding for education without these massive tax increases. As I go around the district, you know, I have people coming to me and saying that they're living... After they pay all their bills, they have $800 left of discretionary money. Please don't raise our taxes. You folks struggle with it on the school board when you're looking at school board taxes. We have to look at the same thing, and we tried to prioritize, make K-12 education certainly a big priority of ours. And with the extra hundreds of millions of dollars going into K-12 education this year, we thought we did that. And I'm hopeful that the governor will not create this crisis and at least let the money flow to the schools.
Let me just add two things, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. From what I saw from the numbers that we got, it looks like Mount Carmel would get another $250,000 in total funding over last year's money. That's basic ed, that's special ed, and that's the Ready to Learn Block Grant. So, what we've seen is if this budget is adopted, that you would get an additional $250,000 over what you received last year in basic ed, special ed, and Ready to Learn Block Grant. Just again, referring to what Kurt said, a year and a half ago, a bipartisan committee was set up to come up with a new formula. Basically, what had happened in the past was every governor would have a different formula, and there would change every year. And so, people were saying, "Pennsylvania, like most states, should have an annual funding formula that you would know what it is." And so, a bipartisan committee was set up, and members, equal number of House members and Senate members, Democrat, Republican. And last June, they issued a report unanimously recommending a funding formula. Again, unanimous. Every Democrat, every Republican, every House member, every Senate member. All of our budgets have said, "We need to start using that formula," which includes poverty and those sorts of issues in any new spending. The governor, to this point, has not agreed to that. And to just draw a line on what Kurt said, in the budget proposal that the governor proposed last year, he proposed $400 million in new spending. Out of that $400 million, no exaggeration, $160 million of that $400 million was going to one school district, and it was Philadelphia. Now, here's the important thing. Philadelphia School District has 13% of the students in Pennsylvania. All right? 13% of the students. If you do the math of 400 and 160, that's 40% of the $400 million was going to Philadelphia. So, 40% of the new funding that was included in what the governor has been holding out for was going to a school district that has 13% of the children.
On top of, we had already given them the ability to tax cigarettes to use for education in the city of Philadelphia.
So, if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Excuse me? Can I be recognized?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
I'm Robert Pellefanti. I spent 30 years in the state House of Representatives. Thirty consecutive years, 15 terms, and I voted on 30 budgets. And I'm here as the fact checker. I'm not here to turn this into a Republican TV debate. I'm not here to act as Donald Trump, although I do notice that Senator Gortner does have small hats. However, I knew this was going to be a one-way, very slanted viewpoint of the ongoing budget impacts, and I'm here, again, as a fact checker. The first thing I noticed in the handout that was passed out, this black one, is there's an important date missing, and that is December, right before the Christmas holidays. There was a Senate bill that was negotiated by the four caucuses, House and Democrats in the Senate, and in the House, and the governor. I thought it kind of stunk, but it was a much better budget than what was eventually sent. And to fact-check again what the senator said about not having enough votes, I don't know which of these budgets he's referring to, but that compromise budget that Senator Gortner voted for, and I commend Representative Mosser, my successor, for being... Gordner voted for, and I commend Representative Mosser, my successor, for being one of the fifteen Republicans that wanted to bring it up for a vote. I'm telling you right now that the votes were there to pass that Senate and governor's budget. And the House Republican Leader, who was part of those negotiations, the Majority Leader, the person who supposedly runs the show. However, the Tea Party wing of the House Republicans, led by the Speaker of the House, a Tea Party person, Representative Terzai, who I served with for many terms, as I said, I voted on thirty budgets, and was one person back when you didn't get paid if the budget was held up, who successfully held the budget up, much to the chagrin of my colleagues on both sides of the aisle, but that was to save the local hospital. So, I've been there, and I want to say that every governor's proposal, I won't take as long as John did, but I do believe you need to hear both sides. Every governor asked for much more money in the budget negotiations in his proposal than he expects to get. So, all of this talk about what the governor proposed is puppycock. It's happenstance. It doesn't mean anything. For thirty years later, governors from both parties give budget proposals that we knew were not going to be adopted as is, and never was. In my thirty years, was any governor's budget adopted as it was proposed. It was always eviscerated by both the House and the Senate. Now, the date that's missing here that I may reference to is right before the Christmas holidays. The Speaker of the House abruptly adjourned the House of Representatives, using the excuse that one of the bills, the pension bill, which John indicated was rejected by every Democrat, neglecting to mention that two-thirds of the Republicans also rejected that pension bill because it was unconstitutional. And I'll tell you why, and I'll get to that later if we need to, and we do need pension reform, but you can't mix present employees and future employees, a two-tier system, you can't couple them. It is unconstitutional, and I could cite the section of the Constitution. In any case, that was a lame excuse for Speaker Terzai, who knew there were enough Republicans, slightly including Kirk, who were going to vote for that budget. And that budget did not include all the tax increases that the senator said the governor first proposed. I didn't like that budget either. However, it did tax things like sales, which I've never supported, and only thirty years not once, I ever voted for sales tax increases. But, that was part of the budget, and I think that the governor was willing, ready, and able to sign it. But he was lied to. He was told that the Senate was going to adopt it, which they did, and the House was going to adopt it. It was told that by the House Majority Leader.
Mr. Belafonte?
The votes were there, and Speaker of the House abruptly adjourned and left town for the Christmas vacation, leaving us with no budget.
Mr. Belafonte, as much as I appreciate all this information you're giving us, I was wondering if you had a specific question for our legislators at this time?
Well, again, I, I didn't come here to be
Okay.
Part of the audience. If that's where I'm relegated, and I'm asked to be a person to ask questions, I can certainly do that, but I, I didn't want to give the other side of the issue.
And that is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
I didn't necessarily come here for a tequila day, but, again, I just want to point out that there are two sides to be issued. The pension reform bill was just an excuse. There could have been a budget adopted. And one final thing before I sit down, and I intend to stand up a bit later, but the shale tax industry that the senator correctly stated is on seals right now, and the money from that industry would not bring in what it would have back in the day. But I can tell you, from 2008, from the time the GOP took over both the House and the Senate, there has been proposals by the House and Senate Democrats to tax that industry. Had it been taxed during the same days, somewhere between one-point-two and one-point-five billion, that's what the B would have been brought into Pennsylvania Treasury. And that's coming from the independent office of the independent office of IFO, which is not, it is not catered to House or Senate, Democrats, Republicans, or the governor. It's a completely independent office, and that is their, their report, not mine.
Thank you. Thank you.
And what goes down does come up, and even though the gas industry, the shale industry, the fractures in the state are now not relevant, at some point, they will, and there should be a five percent. The governor just proposed six-and-a-half percent, which I probably don't agree with, but a five percent increase, five percent tax on that industry would go a long way to avoid sales tax increases and restore some of the funding for education that was for four years straight. Governor Corbett reduced educational spending in this state to such a degree that the increase on the governor, a lot of that was just to bring us up to par where we would have been at Governor Corbett, when we're losing, luckily.
All right. So, with that all being said, and I, again, I appreciate everything that's being said here, but, again, we have kids here that are kind of stuck in the middle, and I'm seeing a divide, you know, this Republican-Democrat divide, and we all want bipartisanship, of course, but we cannot let it affect the ultimate result of what's going to happen here with our kids and what can potentially happen here as a school district. Okay? And we're here today to get this all straightened out and plea to the governor our plight as a school district.
Senator Gordner, Mr. Mosser, just real briefly, I mean, not only the Mount Carmel area school district, but there's other school districts, governments that are reaching critical stage. I mean, yes, there's this budget that the governor's now contemplating, but is there anything in the works that may help alleviate this crisis if funding does not come available? Because come June 30th, many of these loans, including the loan that we took out, needed to be, needs to be repaid. And if we don't have funds, and other school districts don't have funds, we're going to be in default. The crisis, as you know, is going to be significant if we all, all of us that have, you know, taken out these loans default. So, is there anything that you could tell us that sheds?
If he vetoes it?
Yes.
We would have to go to a veto over it. I'm hoping that there's the votes there now, because, trust me, everyone's disgusted. Everybody wants to settle. But I don't, I can't guarantee that, but I would guess that would be the next step.
And look, there's no winners so far in this whole process. The Republican Party is not a winner. The House and Senate are not winners. If you do polls and you ask on a statewide basis, does the governor have a favorability rating of the House or Senate, we're all not good. So, this is not a good, this is not a good position to be in.
Definitely not. Our children will be losing out. We have great educators that'll be losing out. We have great administration.
Look, and let me further say, I'm a product of Burke. I hate to bring Burke up here, but I'm a product of public school. Both of my kids are products of public school. They would not be in the colleges that they are without the teachers. We just saw one of my son's favorite teachers just this past weekend that did recommendations. They had outstanding faculty at Burke, and I think that's true throughout our school system. So, this is not a win situation. And, you know, look, let me say this, and then I'll try to get back. Ed Rendell, Democratic governor for eight years, at least half of that Republican House and Senate. Governor Rendell was able to politically get things done. He was able to politically ask for eight things and get four. Next year, he asked for seven and got three, but he had the political background as being a former mayor in order to get things done. He had an incredible chief of staff. Our frustration with Governor Wolf is he never held a public office, and he doesn't seem to have folks around him to get the deal done. And we're hoping that that changes, but we need to get the deal done. And I can tell you as a school board that we hear from a regular basis, from your superintendent, there's no doubt that, and I think it started back in August, that Mount Carmel's in the situ, is in a, you're in a different situation than a lot of the Lewisbergs and the Burrows and the other sort of thing. I mean, I, the sheet that I just handed out shows you get seventy percent of your funding from the state, and that's because of your low tax base that you have here. You don't have tremendous business and industry that can help support tax increases. What I do want to tell you, and this is a challenge for us as legislators, what is that out of the five-hundred school districts, you are in the top ten, not ten percent, but you're in the top ten in regard to state support percentage, and just to be honest with you, at seventy percent. And so, the challenge is, is that the basic education formula that was adopted on a bipartisan basis, we believe helps you slightly over what the previous formulas were. And again, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but you're in the same position that every other school district is in in regard to pension reform, or in the pension issue. I mean, if I ask you honestly what your number-one cost driver is over the past five years, it's pension increases. The only good news about that is that within the next year and a half, that levels out and then levels for a little bit and then starts to go down. So, at least it doesn't have this huge increase that you've had, but it's challenging. And all I can tell you is in the most, we heard Governor Wolf in regard to education funding. Education funding is a bipartisan issue. If you ask people out in the street, do they support more money for education that's well-spent, they will absolutely say yes. And we've tried to in Budget Number Four, I mean, two-hundred million more in the funding. So, we hear you, and the last thing we want, any of us, Democrat, Republican, House and Senate, is schools to close. And we know you guys are in a tough position.
Yeah, just, if I may add, first of all, I appreciate you gentlemen attending tonight and all the members of the Republican, former Representative Belafonte attending today. And I just wanted to tell you that at Mount Carmel area, we have two significant challenges, and one is imminent, and that is the fact, as was described by our board president, Mrs. James, and Attorney Greco, that our fund balance is going to be depleted soon, and of course, we entered into a, into a tram, and that comes due June 30th. So, there's an imminent need for money. So, while we are totally on board, at least some of us are, with the proposed increases that Governor Wolf is looking for, because it would help us tremendously, at this point, that's, that's a future need for us. At this point, we need the subsidies released, and I think the governor is, he's holding out as much as he can to try to get these, these substantial education increases and his other, to try to fix the structural deficit in the state. However, I think it's time for us to see subsidies somehow, some way, and I'll be honest, I mean, school closure is not something that, that the thought that we're relishing. And then additionally, let's assume that the immediate problem is fixed. We've been running deficits now for the last three years, and it's only a matter of years down the road. I can't really ballpark it how many. Well, we'll eat into our fund balance to the point where it's going to be a long-term problem. So, right now, any help you could give us in trying to get that, that remainder of that, of that money released, that, and I heard everything you said tonight, and I know the override of the veto is really the only way it's probably going to happen. At this point, I don't think we really care how it happens. We just don't want to see our schools close. We think we'll be okay for the rest of the school year, honestly, but it's going to be close. And we would love to see, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of our teachers are here tonight and some of our students. We would love to be able to tell them confidently that we're going to be able to open next year, but at this point, we're hoping that that's the case. And so, any help you could give us, short term, and then long term, just, I mean, we're in a very terrible situation because I know we are so reliant on state subsidies, which will, but if we don't get enough in state subsidies, we'll have to raise local taxes, but you know, one mill brings sixty-nine thousand dollars in Mount Carmel area. What can we possibly get out of an area that has zero tax base? There's a few little pockets of, where there's not poverty that support the tax base major. There's no industry. So, we're kind of in a tough spot. Without lots of state subsidy, we're in a tough spot. So, any help you could provide is sure to be welcome.
Yeah, I met a number of times with the governor one-on-one, and, you know, when he was trying to get votes for the budget, and I truly think that the governor is a good man, and truly believes in his, where he's going and where he wants to go. You know, and I want to work with this governor, but it's a matter of here to here, and how do we get there? And listen, our side of the aisle wants to get that number up too, but it's a matter of can we do it in one fell swoop, and how do we get there, about reprioritizing some of the spending in Harrisburg. But I truly believe he believes passionately about what he says, and he's a good man. I'm not taking that away from him. So, I think, what I'm saying that, I think, is that I'm hoping that this good man comes out and says, all right, we realize we can't get the revenues this year. There's just, there's no votes for retroactive tax increases. There's just, there are none. Get this done so that we can have, in the spirit of good compromise for next budget, we can get together as both sides of the aisle with the governor, and we don't want to be in this spot again next year, I make during next year's budget.
Let me just mention, and hopefully you're familiar, there is bipartisan support for a Plan Con bond. That is something that is a new initiative. It actually has House, Senate, Republican, Democratic support, as well as support by the governor. We did include that in the fiscal code bill that was sent to the governor today. If you're not familiar, basically, Plan Con monies have been dwindling in annual budgets, and the amount owed to school districts is huge. So, we came up with the idea last June in order to do about a, about a six-billion-dollar bond. It would be the largest bond in our Commonwealth's history. But with that bond, we would pay off any outstanding money owed to school districts under the Plan Con system. Plan Con is used in order to reimburse school districts for building projects. And according to the sheet I have, Mount Carmel would get three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars as a result of that bond if we were to go through with that. So, I would think that would be helpful. And again, it has bipartisan- And again, it has bipartisan support. Unfortunately, again, up to this point, the governor has said, I will not sign off on this Plan Con proposal until a budget that he is agreeable to is signed. We put it in the fiscal code bill that went to the governor today and are hoping again that he would hold on to that. But that is something different, a new initiative. And again, at the rates, at the bond issue rates right now, it makes sense for us to do it because the payback is not horrible, and we could do that in future budgets. But once this mess finally gets resolved, I think you will see that, and that will be $376,000 that you'll get. I don't know what you still owe on it, but hopefully there's a positive cash flow.
Does anyone else have any questions?
How much does the state pension system affect this budget?
Can you please say your name and give us your address, please? You can stand. I need you to stand, state your name and your address, please.
Name and address. You'd identify yourself.
Oh, Jerry.
Please stand.
Jerry Santelli. I can't hear. That was my question.
And where are you from?
Colton.
Colton, okay.
The state pension system, how much does that affect this budget?
It, much as it is the number one issue and the number one financial issue for school districts, it is the number one issue for the state. Without exaggeration, over the past three years, we have had to come up with $2 billion in new revenues in order to pay past pension debt into SIRS and PIRS. So it is the number one issue facing the state. Number one issue, it used to be the school districts worried about healthcare costs, but that day's gone. It's now pension. Now, the good news is, is like I said, within the year, that increase finally levels. But as recently as seven or eight years ago, school districts in the state were paying about 2% or 3% of salary. We're now over 20%. As a matter of fact, I think we're probably around 25% or 26% of salary is pension cost. So over seven years, we've gone from 2% of salary to 25% or 26% of salary. It's huge. And that's why, criticize this if we want, we made it Senate Bill Number One, is to provide pension relief for new hires, and that is the main part of it. But there were two or three provisions that would affect current employees as it relates to how you determine the highest salary. Right now, it's three years. We would change that to the year highest five years. And we would limit people from spiking their salary at the end in the overtime and stuff in order to draw a higher pension. So those were the two main provisions that we put in that the governor agreed to, and I said in multiple meetings, he agreed to those two provisions to help limit what the future pension costs.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Balfani?
Senator, getting back to the pension issue.
You have a two-minute limit.
Okay. Why not separate pension bill so that a two-tiered system affects new employees, is not mixed with the same legislation within the same bill, as what would affect current employees on their buyout issue, which is again, as I mentioned earlier, has been found unconstitutional. In every other state that tried to do that, it's not only in Pennsylvania, in every single other state that tried to make new hires with existing employees, the states, Supreme Court, were beckoned by a absentee in each of those states, and in each of those states, those laws were overturned. The caveat is, if we separate those two issues, make Senate Bill One, Senate Bill One, and Senate Bill Two, a bill for Senate Bill 22, 222, a bill dealing with prison employees, that makes it easier for members like Kurt and other Democrat members to vote yes on the bill because they know it's not going to be tied up in the courts for an extended period of time.
Yeah. The answer to that, the answer to that, Bob, is that if you put new hires into a 401K plan, which is where everybody else is, unless you're a state or school employee, that will provide savings about 20 or 25 years from now. And that's helpful. It means that school boards, 20 or 25, I don't know who plans to be on the school board 20 or 25 years from now, but it will provide help and savings there. In order to get current savings, in order to get current savings, the only way you do that is through some effect on current benefits. And the easiest way, and the way that Governor Wolf agreed to, Senator Blake, who's a Democratic Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, we had 11 Democratic votes in the Senate in favor of that, is to do those two issues. And again, it is to try to limit spiking at the end and to go from three years to a five-year average. If we don't include those, then there's no short-term savings for the state or for school districts.
My question was, why not separate them?
Because there's no short-term savings. We're hearing from school boards all across the state that they need some relief, and that is a way of giving them some relief in the short term. You can agree with it or not agree to it, but that's the only way you provide short-term savings.
You don't get any short-term relief if the issue is immediately taken to the courts. It ties the whole issue. So again, we still fail to answer the question as to why the two issues can't be separated and voted on back-to-back.
I think Senator Gordon, I think, has answered that.
I think he, Mr. Balfani, I believe he did answer your question. Suzie, do I see your hand up over there?
No, I'm, no.
Any other questions?
Three different things.
Please state, state your name and your address, please.
Tara Forcell, Pennsylvania, TTA. I currently live in Colton, Ohio. The only comment, it's more of a comment that I have directed to us. One thing that in all these negotiations with the budget, I would like to remind as well as people here, that part of our Pennsylvania Constitution states, in Article 3, Section 14, "The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth." Right now, I do not see that happening. And regardless of, that should have been one thing that should come foremost in everything. When it comes to that, we are not seeing that. And I know that that is what we are talking budgets and things, but this should be before we sit down with the budget, that is in our Pennsylvania Constitution, that that is to be taken care of first.
Constitutional, any of you constitutionalists? I mean, we've got to push that with the governor.
Joe, Mr. Brown.
State your name and your address.
Joseph Brown from Mount Carmel. I'm a teacher here. I'm president of the Teachers Association. With all the respect, Mr. Gordon, it seems like everything you've tried to say to us tonight, and I appreciate your coming and taking the time to talk to us, but it seems like all you've really done is blame the governor for all these problems. If I have a kid who fails a test in my class, I could blame the kid, I could blame his parents. That's not going to do anybody any good, and I'm not going to help the kid, which is what we're here to do. And by you just blaming the governor, you say, well, we sent him this budget, and we sent him this budget. You know he's going to veto it, but you can still stand there and say, oh, well, we sent them all these budgets. But you know he's going to veto it, so it's just politics. And I think you, and you, Mr. Moser, like, you are supposed to fight for us in Harrisburg. We're in trouble here, and a lot of us here have given our whole lives to this town and to this school district. And how can you look us in the face when we don't know if we're going to have a job here in a couple of months because we can't open the school? Like, enough is enough already. It's nine months. You have to do your job. We do our job. That's your job.
And the response I'll have to that is that, look, and if you want to start, you can start flooding our offices with calls for two or three or four billion dollars in tax increases. We have not had that. I can tell you in regard to the folks that have contacted my office, and we've had 800 or 900 contacts, it is close to 90% opposed to tax increases out of the 900 contacts that have come in. Now, so that's our dilemma. That's where we're at. So we believe, like individuals and families, we have to live within our means, and we've come up with a budget that actually increases spending at a historic high, another $200 million for basic education. We are the sixth-largest state in the country, and if you look at the number of states, we are sixth in per pupil expenditures for state spending. So we are about right where you would expect we would be in regard to state spending per pupil. So our challenge is, is that we are not having people contact us saying, give us a 25% increase in personal income tax, tax funeral homes, tax daycare, all of those sorts of things. So we've put forward budgets in order to provide as much money as we can within the amount of revenues that's coming in.
When the right mind is going to call you and say, raise my taxes? Like, I mean, you're just spinning it.
They're not.
You're just spinning it. Doesn't like, it's not a real answer.
They're, well.
But, you know, I think every, every offer, we're not just going back with the same offer. Every offer we came up, every offer we came up, it's both ways. I mean, we can't just expect to, I don't think anybody expects us being an equal branch of government, equal and separate branch of government, to just acquiesce to what the governor's demands are. Every offer we've come up, at some point, we have, I mean, it's compromised, but every single offer we've come up. And, I mean, you can't just throw it at us either. I'm not trying to put it all on the governor, but every offer we've come up, and at some point, he's, he has to have votes, and he doesn't have the votes. But also, he has to realize that he doesn't have the votes and come closer to us, not stay where he's at.
Can you please?
I'm Brooke Shockey. I'm a first-year teacher here, so I'm a little bit new to the scene, but I just have some pictures. I'm from Mount Carmel. And again, I don't have kids yet and all of that stuff, so I don't have those problems to deal with, but in the long run, I think this is going to take a compromise on both tax increase stuff and spend increase stuff on things. I would honestly rather take a small tax hike, or tax hike on something, a tax increase, than lose my job because my school has to close. So I think, just in the little bit that I know on this issue, I think there needs to be compromise with the tax increase stuff, too.
That's fair.
Thank you.
That's fair.
Mr. Secavage?
Mrs. James, thank you. Rick Secavage, Colton, actually, the athletic director here, and I do serve with Senator Gordon and Representative Moser, and I'm a CSO board. I will say they're two wonderful gentlemen. I know Mr. Balfani all my life, and I know him as a great legislator. I know our board. I know we're all hard-working people. The question I have is, and it's not so much as passing the budget, and I know what Mr. Steller has indicated, we need money now, but he also has indicated the problems we have in the future. And that gets, that's where my question's coming from. It's not so much as tax increase, but tax fairness. Where are we as a legislature right now with tax fairness? We talked about us being 70%, where some districts are only 30%. You know, a real estate mill in Mount Carmel area is only pulling in $69,000, where in Central Columbia, Senator Gordon, as you should know, is pulling in close to $150,000. We need some equity in this state. We need some balance in this state where we have to make it maybe not a tax increase, but more of a tax fairness where we have to redistribute our revenues. Nobody's saying that anybody maybe needs to be paying more. We just need to redistribute it a little bit. Maybe we don't need to pay an existential amount of money in real estate, which is what our local school districts are burdened with. Maybe it needs to be redistributed. Maybe it needs to be put in sales tax. And I know Representative, former Representative Balfani is against sales tax and things like that, but there are states, as you do know, that maybe have a higher sales tax, but they don't have a greater burden on real estate. Maybe we need to look at that. I don't know if you guys are looking at that. I don't know where property tax reform is in the House and Senate, but this is just not a problem. Again, it is a serious problem, but we're just putting a Band-Aid on a wound right now. This is going to continue bleeding, and we got to, yes, stop the bleeding, but we got to take care of what's caused the bleeding. And I think that's what's causing the bleeding. We have to worry about it. So, I mean, where are we at with property tax reform or other forms of this?
I can tell you that the House and Senate have both during this session taken up property tax reform. The House passed a proposal, sent it over to the Senate. The Senate took up a proposal. The vote on it was 24 to 24, but it was the first time, been around for a long time. It is the first time in a session that both the House and Senate have taken up serious property tax reform proposals. The governor, to his credit, last March, proposed a property tax reform proposal, and I think all of that combines. The question is, do you eliminate property taxes? And there's a lot of folks that are concerned with that. Do you do it on a partial basis in order to allow school districts a menu so that you guys can say, do we want an increase of PIT? Do we want to increase the sales tax? And then have a dollar-for-dollar reduction in property taxes? Some of us feel that it should be, some feel that it should be done at the statewide level. Some feel that it should be done at a school district by school district level. But I can tell you, in the 22 years that I've been there, the healthiest discussion other than back in '93, '94, which is when Alan Kukovich and some others led the effort, it's the most serious discussion we've had on property tax reform in 24 years.
And I, I think Bob would probably agree. They probably would have had a property tax reform talk since the entire, every year you were probably in the House, that what I've been told. We had, we had a bill on last session that was House Bill 76, that would have been elimination of property taxes. I voted for it, and that's, I think that's the same bill that was in the Senate that tied, and the lieutenant governor voted against it.
Yes.
It's going to kill it.
That was an earned income tax shift, I believe?
It was sort of like the governor's proposal where...
It would have increased the PIT, would have increased the sales tax, would have expanded the expansions, but it would have eliminated the property tax. My concern with it was, and I'll be honest with you, my concern with it was, and I was one of the 24 novos, my concern with it was that it also eliminated every commercial real estate tax. So that Walmart, Kmart, Target, Wise, Giant, every big business would have had the real estate taxes eliminated, and individuals would have had to make up the difference under the version that the Senate considered. And I did not like the fact that Walmart and Kmart and Target and those folks would no longer pay any real estate tax, but individuals would have to make up that $4 billion difference. So.
As a taxpayer in the state, I would like to thank yous for holding the line on taxes because every budget that this governor sends down has tax increases in it, and I can't afford to pay any more taxes. And I would just like to thank yous for holding the line on that.
Anything else? Or should we?
So I guess my question to you is, is when you go back and, you know, speak with the governor again, how are you going to, again, tell them about our plight here? How are you going to help us so that we do not close June 30th?
I have a question that kind of adds. My name is Eve Lash. I'm from Mount Carmel. Is there a definitive timeline? Like, when can this be done? Can it go on endlessly? You know, like, we're ready to start on next year's budget. You know, like, there has to be, you know, they elect the Pope. Catholics, let, let, put them on a room. Whites, smoke, blacks, smoke. You stay there till there's an answer. Like, I think we're feeling that that's where we... Like, I think we're feeling that that's where we need to be. Like, it needs to end soon. And I'm saying, you're working hard, and I appreciate that very much, but is there, like, does someone get to say, "It has to be done by now"?
The answer is...
Or are we going to do two budgets at the same time?
Yeah, the answer is no. It could go on indefinitely.
Well, you have a constitutional obligation to educate our children. You need to go back and banter for us. You need to go back and plead and beg, along with everyone here and everyone in the community and in the state.
And I would hope that emails are going to the governor's office as well, because, right now, it's in his hands. I mean, like it or not, it's, right now, it's in his hands, and he has the power with the stroke of a pen to give you all of your money, plus an extra two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars compared to last year, with the stroke of a pen. It's in his court right now. I mean, I will definitely go back and push it forward. I've been, I wouldn't have been one of those fifteen people that put that vote out there if I didn't care about Mount Carmel School District. You're probably, out of all my school districts, you're the folks that are probably having a little bit harder than the rest of them.
Mrs. James, correct. Are there any cases before the Supreme Board, or is the Supreme Board involved with this at all? Or, I mean, you're talking about the branches. I know the Supreme Court...
I think the PSBA filed a case, but I don't think it's...
It hasn't gone.
Right, hasn't gone.
Okay, I just wondered.
If I could just answer your question, and I said it before, this current situation is not good for any of us. It is not. Whether you're the governor, or the House, or the Senate, Kurt, me, whatever, it's just not good for anyone. And, again, excuse me for saying this, and then you can criticize me, but, I mean, under Ed Rendell, a Democratic governor, a progressive Democratic governor, we did not have budgets done eight years in a row, but we had them by July tenth, by July eleventh, by July twelfth. He would stay in Harrisburg and say, "I'm not going anywhere, and you guys aren't going either."
Well, maybe I'll come talk and tell the administration stories.
We would be there day after day after day, and we would get, by July sixteenth or seventeenth or eighteenth, we would get a budget done. Basically, in the way that you're describing, is that we would all stick there day after day after day until we got it done.
Like we do, you know, we come and you teach and you work until...
We need to do that.
Right. How do we make that happen?
We need to do that. We need all the parties to agree to do that. And I, I can tell you from my leadership, which I'm a part of, we are willing to do that. We're willing to do that. But the challenge is, we're nine months in, we need to get this budget done. There's issues in next year's budget. There's going to have to be a tax increase in next year's budget. You heard me say that.
Are the Tea Party guys going to go for that?
Look, I can tell you in the Senate, we had bipartisan support on stuff. I think you're getting to the point where you have bipartisan support in the House in order to deal, if we're, and here's the question, if we're dealing with a structural deficit, and we need to raise some revenues to deal with the structural deficit, then you can make that argument to do it. The challenge with Governor Wolf was, he never made that argument. He said, "I want to increase spending by nine percent, raise taxes to get to the nine percent level." We sent him a budget that increased spending by three percent. If we say, "Okay, we'll have a three percent increase budget and come up with other revenues to deal with the structural deficit," we could get a deal. We could get a deal.
Ms. James.
We had a plan in place that, where we had other revenue, cigarette tax, we had some gaming revenues, we had some other revenues out there that were right there for us, and that's how we got to the bigger numbers in the first place. So we had alternatives out there. And the Tea Party is only one small faction of that caucus.
Mr. Britt?
Yeah, my point is this, is that a number of hours were spent the other day in session, I forget which branch it was, discussing medical marijuana usage. While I follow this on TV and the negotiations that take place, there's always these long breaks that go on. You mentioned that you want to stay in, this needs to get done. We're nine months into it, why are we saying that now? Why hasn't this been done? Why does it take the governor to say, "No one leaves until this is done"? And if I'm not mistaken, doesn't the Constitution say that, the Pennsylvania Constitution say that a budget needs to be passed by June thirtieth?
It doesn't.
It doesn't say that?
It doesn't.
No, that's just for us. We...
That's our budget. Which we don't have one.
I don't think it's the Constitution, I think it's the statute, but it does not...
But regardless, we're trying to pass budgets for next year ourselves without knowing what's going to happen. You talk about having to raise taxes, but what ends up happening when it's not raised at your level, it ends up getting kicked down the road to us, and we have to raise taxes. And the area that we're in is a very low tax base, but also issues collecting those taxes. Representative Mossar, I want to ask you, maybe you can explain something for me, the local Tax Enabling Act that you were sponsored, that you sponsored last year. Could you explain that a little bit as to how that could affect us?
I'd have to look at the bill again. That was one that I was asked to run for a prior, remember, but I have to look at it. I can get back to you. I'll give it to the board. We have the exact same options on the panel.
Ms. Nastico?
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Nastico, I'm the elementary school principal, and I also do federal programs here, and I'm hopeful that my question is the easiest one for you the whole night, because I think it's simple. I'm just curious, the numbers that are on the sheet that you handed out, this was generated from where?
That actually is from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, PDE.
Okay, it will be interesting, I think, for the business manager that I took into it, because I have managed federal programs for a number of years, and some of the allocations noted here for various years are double what we were actually allocated. For what that's worth, they don't appear correct. You know, it's easy to go back to...
The ARA, I mean, the federal stimulus monies are...
I'm after the ARA funding drop.
Okay.
So, I mean, because it's clear to see in nine and ten and ten and eleven where the, where the federal stimulus was there.
Yes.
But our loss was substantial after that, and it was less for, actually, all three of these years. Thirteen, fourteen, it's a little bit close.
Those are from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, so if you have discrepancies that you want to share either with me or with the department, but that's where those numbers come from.
Okay, well, I think it's probably worth for us to look into, just because, I mean, I didn't want him to speak, so I sat here going through PDZ grants and checking my numbers, just to make sure, but, I mean, I guess it's just, it might be something for us to note that, to make sure we're working.
With transportation, you rolled into those numbers, but with other numbers you rolled into...
That's my question, would anything else be factored in from a federal allocation?
We'd have to find out from PD what all was rolled into that number.
Any other questions?
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
I just, can I just say one thing? Coria Lesko, Carmel, business manager. Just think it's very unfair that it's taking so long for this to be done when, you know, we have a deadline of June thirtieth. If our budget isn't passed by June thirtieth, we get fined every day. What happens to you guys?
Nothing, and it's not fair.
It's not fair.
It's not fair.
And, you know, like, as administrators on the board, we're in such a very, very difficult situation right now, and it's so hard to even worry about next year's budget when we still have no idea what's going on with this year's.
I don't disagree with you. The last time, nineteen fifty's, and I forget if it was nineteen fifty-six or nineteen fifty-seven was the last time that this budget has gone on this long, but this is nothing like anything I've seen in twenty-four years, and it's horrible. I mean, it's horrible, and you're exactly right. You were putting together this year's, you had to put together this year's budget four months ago in order, if you wanted to raise taxes during the primary and stuff, and you don't know what your numbers are, so I don't...
Right, we still, we don't know what we're getting this year. I mean, it's impossible to even project anything for next year.
You're exactly right. I don't disagree.
So if we have to close our doors, June, okay, and we can't open them back up, where do we go with our kids? Because first of all, we provide transportation to a private school down in Shamoken, and how do we do that? And where do we go with our kids? Because if we send them into a neighborhood or a school district, they're probably in the same dire straits. So what do you do with them?
We hope to have a final, a final, final. Again, we actually have a budget in place, the governor vetoed the six billion, but we hope to get the deal done, and we're willing to keep on working until we get the deal done.
Can I just ask a question of Mr. Mossar? If I heard you correctly at the beginning, you didn't think it was a good idea that the Department of Education had sent protocol about closing schools. You felt that it was a panic. And I agree, I would not want to cause a panic, but then I also heard Mr. Stellar say that if we do not have a budget passed and do not have our state funding released, then we are closing in June. That's pretty concrete. I would ask if you have any insight as to tell everybody here why we shouldn't up you panicking at this point.
Well, I'm saying they shouldn't be playing in this game of panic. I'm not saying, I'm not saying you shouldn't be panicked. I'm saying they shouldn't be playing in this game of panic. I'm saying that we have six billion dollars in the Treasury sitting there, ready to come out to school districts. Release the money. Keep a portion of it, all right? Keep X amount, and let's negotiate what that final number is. Blue line, X amount, but not a half-year's funding, and not put these schools where the schools are at. Blue line, X amount, blue line, R-line, all together, where we still have to come back to the table and negotiate, but don't hold the kids hostage, hold the legislature hostage. Blue line, R-line out. Blue lines to mother lines where it hurts us. Why hold these kids hostage? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you shouldn't be panicked, because I would be if I was sitting here and see it too. I'm as pissed off as everybody else in this room. I'm angry. You know, we're at this point.
And I think it's just a little disheartening, and I kind of wasn't going to bring this up, but Mr. Britt started the ball rolling on the medical marijuana. I don't know if I misheard, but I believe I heard on the news today that it took three days of debate. If that's true, a substance that's illegal, according to the federal government, took three days to get a bill written up that's going to pass, and we're in nine months of education. That just doesn't make sense to me.
That was, that was years in the making, first of all. That wasn't just, we're out, and three days later, it was passed. And while that was going on, there was budget negotiation going on, there were budget bills moving, there was a fiscal code moving, so to sit down there and not do anything on the budget, not do anything else, is that time well-served also. I mean, you're going to be there to work on a budget, hopefully, but while you're there, you only can do X amount on that, and then you pass these bills, you've got to go over to the Senate, you've got to be doing, working on something, but...
I know, I might be a little biased, but I feel that that should have been a prioritization.
Well, it was, and it has been. That's priority number one.
We have spent over thirty days on the budget.
Okay.
Like thirty session days. Now, we've, I can tell you, I spent nine months, because I've been to twenty-five to thirty meetings with the governor, I've been to another twenty meetings with the House and Senate leadership, so we have, but just on session days, we've spent over thirty session days on this year's budget, more than ten times more than anything else out there. So, and let me just again emphasize, the money is in the Treasury. So this is an issue where we have to raise taxes in order to get the money to send it out to you. That three billion dollars that the governor vetoed is in the Treasury, and he could, if he signs, again, if the six billion that we sent him, the six-point-two billion that we sent him today, if he could just cut out the two-hundred-and-fifty that he says is in balance and release the other five-point-seven, you could get money literally within a week. I think when he signed the budget back at the end of December, they fast-tracked money, and I think he got it within a week or so.
Okay. That was going to be my next question.
Treasury, and our state treasurer was on the ball, they actually had, state treasury, to their credit, had their, over Christmas, over that Christmas holiday, had their entire workforce work the whole weekend in order to make sure that the schools got the money out. So I can just tell you, looking in your face, the money's in the Treasury. So again, if the governor and I'll agree with Kurt, he can whack us, cut our line out so that we don't get paid any, but whack us, but release the three billion dollars that's in the Treasury for you guys so you can finish out your school year. That's why I would hope you would hurry.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment session so we can proceed with the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize the Student Merit Award winners. I apologize for the boring session, some of you. The elementary, I believe, is Carissa Korencavage. Hi, Carissa, how are you? I'm so sorry if you were bored, but you learned a lot. Okay, all right. Carissa, the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education Merit Award winner for February two thousand sixteen is Carissa Korencavage. Carissa Korencavage is a third-grade student at the Mount Carmel Area Elementary School. She was nominated for the Merit Award by her teacher, Mrs. Elizabeth Geis. Mrs. Geis shared the following. Carissa is an excellent student and a wonderful example for other third-grade students. She always tries her very best and will oftentimes go above and beyond when completing assignments. She is always prepared for class and is very organized. Carissa enjoys creating things and is extremely artistic. She will do anything she can to help out another student or help her teacher in the classroom. She is friendly to everyone and is a hard-working individual. She is well-deserving of this award. Outside of school, Carissa participates in Kyokushin Karate, did I say that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And Aikido. They're testing me on my speech skills here. Some of her interests and hobbies include reading, learning music, camping, and spending time with family. Carissa hopes to become a veterinarian someday. Carissa is the daughter of Gregory and Peggy Sue Korencavage. She resides with her family in Mount Carmel. Carissa? Can you, can you kind of make your way down here? Watch you don't trip. On behalf of the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education, Carissa, I would like to present you with the Merit Award for February two thousand sixteen. Do you have anything to say of speech? Do you have a speech? Thank you, Mom and Dad. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the high school, Chantel Scavery. The Mount Carmel Area Board of Education Merit Award winner at the high school level for the month of February is senior Chantel Scavery. Chantel was nominated by her chemistry teacher, Tammy Michaels, who said, "Chantel is a quiet individual who does not look for praise or acknowledgement. Not only does she participate in sports, but also participates in the school musical. I have known her since seventh grade and have watched her grow, mature, and step out of her comfort zone to become a pleasant young lady." Chantel is a distinguished honor roll student, a member of the National Honor Society, and previously won the Elks Student of the Month Award. She is a captain for both the varsity cross-country and cheerleading teams, vice president of the Future Teachers of America, sergeant of arms for both the reading and interact clubs, and had leading roles in the past school musicals, including this year's Seussical the Musical. She is the two thousand sixteen year book editor, and due to her academic and athletic success, was recently named one of the six Ed Romance Sports Hall of Fame Scholar-Athletes. She will be honored this weekend at their banquet, where she will receive the Joseph Wachaleski Female Scholar Award. Chantel loves to run, read, watch live theater, and spend time with her friends and family. Chantel is the daughter of Gerald and Teresa Scavery of Mount Carmel. After graduation, she plans to attend Penn State University Schools of Agricultural Sciences to major in food science. Chantel, on behalf of the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education, I would like to present you with the Merit Award for February two thousand sixteen. I hope that four-H Club funding comes through. Do I say something?
Okay, well, I just want to thank, you know, Tammy Michaels, Mrs. Michaels, for nominating me for this, and thank you for all being here, and I want to thank, you know, all the teachers and administration for, you know, the well-rounded education I receive as a student here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Moving on, motion is needed to approve the minutes of the February-
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Of the February eighteenth, two thousand sixteen regular board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jose Noah and seconded by Mr. Brecker. All in favor?
Aye.
PTA representative?
You guys can leave if you want. Feel free. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to recognize guests desiring to speak on any of the listed agenda Moving forward, administrative reports, Superintendent, Mr. Stellar.
He's just, uh, so go to the principal's room.
We're gonna skip that for now and go right to the principal report. Ms. Rannell?
Yes, good evening. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to mention a few positive things that are happening in our schools. A lot of events going on, and we can talk about well-rounded individuals, just to mention some things. Our ninth grade students were just taking on a VOTEC store, or a VOTEC tour, so they got a chance to see how VOTEC operates and look at some of the various shops. I'd like to thank our guidance department, Mrs. Sarif and Mrs. Nestico for organizing that. We've had several groups going to math competition. One group went to Bucknell, another group is going to Lock Haven. CSI Computer Fair is on Monday, OM States is April second. There is an assembly coming up that we've organized with the help of Northumberland County Children and Youth, and that is an assembly that will be given on inappropriate communications and texting, so our students can understand the legal implications of that. There's also an FBLA state competition, April eleventh through thirteenth, that our students are working very hard on. We received our winter Keystone results, and we saw some very positive results. There are now thirteen additional students in our eleventh grade class who have passed all three Keystones, so there's a total of about fifty-three kids that have passed all three of the Keystones, and then some various combinations, maybe they passed one or two. We saw the largest jump in the retested students in literature, and that was sixty-eight percent of our students in literature who tested, retested past the Keystone, and that was very impressive. We saw some modest increases in algebra and biology, not quite as significant, but still to note that. So what we are doing in our activity period, and our teachers who are working hard adopting anchors and looking at their data has really helped, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Junior high?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of events that occurred at our school. State police trooper Rick Blair met with our seventh and eighth grade a couple weeks ago to talk about a summer event available for our students called the Susquehanna Valley Law Enforcement Camp Cadet Program. Besides a thirty-five dollar fee, the camp is a week-long event at Susquehanna University that will be free for our students. Again, there is a thirty-five dollar processing fee. The camp is sponsored by the PA State Police. The camp specifically will be offered June nineteenth to the twenty-fourth, again at Susquehanna, so it's a great opportunity for our students. Any, anyone who wants more information at our camp, please check in the office. The junior high is going through our final preparations for PSSA testing, which starts officially on Monday, April eleventh. We've been holding after-school tutoring since mid-February. I'd like to thank Ms. Kilmur, Mr. Persing, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Wagner for offering to help our students after school. In fact, I dropped in the science after-school touring session, and there was about fifteen kids, so we're really excited about that. As well as with our after-school tutoring, we're really spending a lot of time analyzing and speaking with our students about their perceptions and their motivation leading into PSSAs. Ms. Wyash, who I hope is still here, as our cheerleaders, and some of our student leaders, they hung up some PSSA motivational pulses throughout the school, much like you would see during football or basketball season. So we're trying to get our students motivated in that fashion. We've also planned on April eighth, the Friday before testing, with the help of Mrs. Check and our student council, a fun fair. And the theme is gonna be motivational and to reward our students for all their hard work, and teachers for all their hard work leading into PSSAs, and we invite all of you that again Friday, April eighth, which is the day before, or the weekend before PSSA testing, to come out and, and wish our students luck. So again, we're really proud of all the hard work, and those teachers still in here for all the hard work you guys are doing, and again, with all our students as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Elementary, Ms. Nestico?
Hi, good evening, and thank you to both of you. There's lots I don't have to repeat, because the same is very true, after-school tutoring has been underway, I say at every meeting, and I will say it tonight, I mean, thank you, huge thank you to all our teachers for their tireless efforts. I mean, staying after school, we have over a hundred kids in need currently that are receiving tutoring services, and we, it's very much geared this year more than ever before on very specific data and interventions that those kids, which is good news, moving into the PSSAs. I also wanna congratulate, the elementary had two OM teams both placed, one took first place in their division, one took second, so they're also on two states. So thank you to all the coaches and all their hard work for that. Before our next board meeting, and especially it's because it's first and second grade, I hope some of you are able to make the first and second grade spring choral concert, that is Wednesday, April thirteenth, at six-thirty, and those of you who come to those and their kindergarten graduation know how fun they are. And finally, worth mentioning, and again, kudos to our staff, because I only wish just even one or two of you could have been there the day that we underwent our PDIS, which is the School, Schoolwide Positive Behavior Support State Audit, so to speak. We had three folks, two from Patton, which is the, I don't know if you're familiar with Patton, the Pennsylvania Training Association that's affiliated with PDE, and one from PDE. They score you on a hundred-point basis. Our school received one of the highest scores ever at a ninety-three, and we believe only one other school in the state ever received a hundred. So huge accolades for that, and there will be a few staff members who were invited to attend the conference, the statewide conference in Hershey in May, and will be awarded with a banner. It's a huge attribution to our school. Even though it isn't an SPP score yet, this goes hand-in-hand, and our staff has worked so hard toward it for three years, and it really, really paid off, and that building was alive, man. The kids were awesome, and there's no doubt, they know what tornado pride is in our way, so.
All right.
Kudos to all of those of you up there.
Thank you. That's, that's very impressive. That's, that's a lot of hard work, and thank you all.
And spring pictures are tomorrow, pre-take booths. If anybody were here.
All right. Mr. Stellar back?
No.
Nope. Okay. Maintenance report?
Yeah, just a few, few things. Thankfully, with the nice weather, the last few weeks, we were able to get our, our ball fields and our track open for spring sports season for the first time in, in a long time for the opening of the season, so thankfully, thanks for the weather and, and our hard work from our maintenance staff. We also have the tennis courts ready for, for the public's use, and hopefully next week, with the weather cooperating, we'll be working on some of the grounds issues around the campus over the following break. That's it.
Athletic directors report?
Just that, corner sports are finally completed, and special congratulations to our girls' basketball team for going deep into the state playoffs this year. As usual, they did a terrific job. And also gaining another district title, and to Gabe Bogutsky, our two-hundred-and-twenty-pound wrestler who made it to the state tournament last weekend and did win a match, but unfortunately lost two close, one points to decisions, and was very close again winning them both and placing down there, so a great, a great career for him, as well as Alan Nikuski, who guarded his a hundred victory at regionals and just missed all the states, but again, congratulations to him. Spring sports has started, as Mr. Fegley has indicated, track and baseball facilities are up and operational, and we have everything going, and hopefully, the Monday after Easter, we will be opening the track for the public to take care of their-
That was a question I was gonna ask.
Their walking abilities, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to athletic items. A motion is needed to approve athletic items one through four as listed.
Motion.
Made the motion. Mr. Muldowney made the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Britt. Any questions?
I think this may be publicly, it might be a good idea to, to thank Mr. Everett, Mr. Kariki on their years of service to our football program.
Absolutely. Both gentlemen have been there for a while, and Mr. Cheddar will chair my accolades that they both will be shortly missed on the program.
Yeah, those two guys, I'd like to say they, they put in tons of time, and it's gonna be very hard to find two individuals that can match the time and knowledge that those two have, so I'd like to thank them as well for all their hard work for our football program at school.
Roll call? Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney votes yes. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Shurok?
Yes.
Mr. Venna?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Motion is needed to approve financial items one through three.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Zanella?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brecker. Any questions? Roll call? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Shurok?
Yes.
Mr. Venna?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney votes yes. Motion is needed to approve the payment of bills.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Britt, seconded by Mr. Muldowney. Any questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Shurok?
Yes.
Mr. Venna?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney votes yes. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Committee reports, the foundation was going to hold a meeting tonight, but the realization of an extended board meeting, it was canceled at the last minute. For the foundation? For Mr. Stellar? So Mr. Stellar is now back. I would like to recognize Mr. Stellar for his administrative report.
Yes, I have a very brief report. I apologize for the delay. First of all, thank you for everybody coming tonight to show the, Representative Mosser and Senator Gordon of the urgency that, that, that we're experiencing here in Mount Carmel. Much appreciated. And I would also like to shift gears a little bit and just say good luck to the Supes and the members of the MCA Musical, Seusical, which will be, if it late the ninth, in the auditorium, and we hope y'all come. Kids are working hard. We don't need to talk about the next item on my agenda, which is the status of the budget, so we don't need to talk about that. Mrs. Lesko attended the Pasco Conference, which is the Pennsylvania School, School Business Professionals Conference in Hershey, and that was a topic of high priority was the state budget, so she came back with lots of, lots of good information for us at Mount Carmel area. And finally, I know that the principals probably said it, but congratulations to the Lady Tornadoes, Mrs. Rannell and the gang, and to Gabe Bogutsky and Alan Ann Kuski and all of our OM teams, and everybody that's doing, the FBLA gang, going to the state gen- state, state competition. And did I miss anybody? I don't think so, because the principal probably talked to me if I did.
Math counts.
Pardon me?
Math counts.
Math counts, yes. Yes, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mrs. James.
And Mr. Stellar? Under new business action items, motion is needed to approve new action items one through five and an additional two, which I will read, to provide the MCA Odyssey of the Mine Teams with funding for state competition not to exceed seventeen hundred dollars, and provide the MCA Future Business Leaders of America Team with funding to attend states not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Muldowney?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brecker. Under question? No questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Shurok?
Yes.
Mr. Venna?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney votes yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Personnel items, a motion is needed to approve personnel items one through four as listed.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Muldowney?
Second.
Mrs. James, I need to add, under number four, motion is needed to accept the application placed on file, I have Pam Rico-Vegas and Jim Okum.
Okay, they're, all right, they're on the next page.
Yeah, who's listed on the next page? Put a few parts of the motion as well.
Thank you. And who seconded that?
Zanella.
Mr. Zanella, I'm sorry. It's a little hard to hear. All right. Any questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Shurok?
Yes.
Mr. Venna?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney votes yes. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Again, for the public, I would still like to entertain any comments and questions